Select Board's meeting, November 27, 2017. In attendance, Mr. Moblin, Mr. Dede, Mr. Fox, Mr. Steinhardt, and Cindy Pendleton.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, November 27. Hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. First order of business is public comments. If anyone has any public comments, raise your hand. We'll call on you if you could state your name and address for the record.
Randy Rendell, 13 Water Lane, Skybox, Fort Worth. Last week I got a call from Randy Brown, DPW.
He's a really nice guy and he's right there.
I'm sure he's a great guy.
Okay.
It's kind of quiet.
And he's right there.
You know, but he informed me that the town in Fort intends to use part of the parklot, which the town does own a small piece to the right, or a construction yard, for some construction on the side streets, to store equipment, sewers, manholes. And me and my partner, we have some concerns with that because, first of all, it's going to look terrible for our business. Safety concerns for my patrons, of equipment going through my parklot and around my parklot. Right now, you have people that go to the rail trail park in my parklot and park there, so it's going to make the parking smaller. And we're already short parking as it is on a busy night. I have a lot of concerns. I really don't want anybody going through my property because my customers aren't going to want to park over there, or what you're walking through there is a piece of equipment going through there. So I have some safety concerns and monetary concerns.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Sir.
I'd like to respond to what Randy said.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Kirk Sanders, I'm a safety officer for the police department.
I had left a message at the bar because I wanted to speak with you, Randy, I wanted to.
Okay.
I don't think it's going to be that big of an issue to the fact that it's only going to be during daytime hours. You're looking at from 7:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon that they'll be working. And it wouldn't be in that major parklot that you have, but it would be more to your parklot on the left-hand side.
Actually, I got a diagram from Mr. Brown. It's actually on the right-hand side. He showed an area on the town property, it was board and night property, that they wanted to make the yard. You know? And I do have a lot of customers during the day that have their cars there, too. And if you've got equipment going through there and somebody's not looking, I mean, you just had a police officer in Westfield killed last year doing a road job. Dump truck backed up right over the poor guy.
It's not more that equipment's going to be in there on that side. It would be just the local residents on Veterans Street that would be able to park their cars there until they clear out of there and they'll be able to have access back into their home.
That is the first I've heard about neighbors. This is totally...
Yeah, it's just neighbors that I was looking for. That's why I was looking.
All right, look, I can talk to you about that. That's not a problem. This has nothing to do with the neighbors' cars. This has to do with construction equipment.
That I'm not aware of.
Sewers and manholes and...
Suggest a meeting.
Right. But I don't have an issue working with you on the other matter. We can...
So I, yeah, I guess I would suggest that the three of you get together and make sure you guys are all on the same page as to what we're doing. I mean, we're using the town property there for the layup yard, but, you know, maybe if we all get together, you'll figure out it's not as bad as you thought.
There's plenty of places that they can store the equipment. There's two farms. There's the boat launch that's closed. You have the cove that is now closed. There's plenty of places around that you can park their stuff.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So we have to pay our bills here. I need to acknowledge payables warrant 1-8-1-3-B dated 11/20 in the amount of $373,000, And payroll warrant 1-8-1-3 dated 11/27 in the amount of $215,136.2. We have minutes of November the 13th.
Read them?
I did.
You fine?
Yep.
Make a motion to accept the minutes for November 13, 2017.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
South Wicktall and Granville Regional School District Committee Budget Roundtable meeting. That's this weekish.
This Thursday, the 30th, at 5:30. There's going to be a quorum of the board's city. You'll have to post tomorrow. So, Joe, I know you're not available.
I won't be available.
So the question is, are two of you going?
Yes.
I'll be there.
Okay.
Did I get a reminder call?
It'll be posted.
Do I have 5:30, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Superintendent's conference room.
Yep. Got it. Okay, we finally have an applicant for the vacant position as the associate planning board member, Mr. Spina. David Spina? Spina? Spina?
That's a joint appointment.
Correct.
They want to be put on the next agenda.
Okay.
He's going to their meeting tomorrow.
Very well. So we should schedule this with the planner and their secretary. Maybe we can squeeze that in on the 11th at some point. That's going to be a busy evening, but should be quick. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, we've received a letter from the safety officer concerning the need to examine the selectman's authority to rename streets because of the new 9/11 system.
Yep.
Enhanced. So there is a reference under the town code where the selectmen do have the authority, but it references other statutes that I'm not sure whether they're still in effect. So if the board is so inclined, we would have to have town council review the underlying authority that gives the selectmen the right to go ahead and do that. Beyond the merits of the safety officer speaking to you.
Kirk, do you want to speak to this issue tonight, or?
Yeah, just by nature.
I think the memo we have is from 2000. The wheels of government turn slowly apparently.
Yeah, yeah.
Les, were you on the board then?
No. He was on the assessors.
Oh, okay. Well, there you go. There you go.
We were just interested in the money.
Yeah, we got the tax bills out, okay. They seem to find them.
As you can see from my latest letter, we recently had an incident where we had emergency call down on Evergreen Street. And what happened was Westfield was responding with their ALS to that scene because it was a cardiac issue going on. And they didn't know where to go because we have, like, three different Evergreens. Truly with our new next-generation system, our next-generation 911, we need to change that. I was working with Officer Miles on this, and he says for the system to work correctly, especially with the mapping and everything, that we need to correct it. He addressed this back in 2000, I think February 2000. And Carl and I were working on it at the time, but I don't know why we never, it never got done. But as you can see, there's a lot of work, there was a lot of work put into it with the different names and how the names, the names that we came up with. I think that this has to be done. The change has to be done for our system to work, or we're going to have ourselves a liability issue. I don't know if you read the letter that I had back in 2000.
Yes.
I used a little history there, as you can see, with some of the names and everything, and some names that made sense. And also, in doing it, I tried to do it with the least amount of people that would have got affected by it. So I think what we're looking at, and I think at the time, Carl, we have to send, have a hearing. We have to send notification to those people.
Yeah, there's a full process. There's like a schedule and holding hearing with the abutists because it's going to be issues that may require them to change legal documents on their residences.
Mortgage.
Especially when your road is going to change, your addresses.
It, you know...
Yeah, your parcel's your parcel. I mean, it's commonly known as, but yeah, it would affect...
Sure, your license, everything.
Yeah, your driver's license and all that stuff, yes.
Any questions on that?
No, I guess, I think we probably should go back to council and figure out what's the process today because it might have changed since then.
Exactly.
And my question to you is, can we, at my peril, can we lop Southwick Hill into this process?
Yes, it is. We are, that's already in the process. I just sent the email to Al Schlesler that he's going to present to the planning board tomorrow night. And in order regarding that gate, they have a plan regarding leaving the gate, but it'll be like a device that will be on that gate where if you need to get through there, you would hit nine, whatever combination number on that keypad that would demagnetize it and open it up. But in order to do that, one of the stipulations is they have to change the name in case businesses will know where they have to go to the correct side of that street to make their deliveries and everything. And that they're not to, I just did the email, not to leave snow on the end on both sides.
Yeah.
No debris, no parked cars or anything, so...
That's a private road, right? Because they didn't follow the subdivision standards, so it's actually...
Exactly.
So it's not so much a DPW issue, it's a police and fire issue responding to those issues.
Correct. But still, I think we had looked at that, and it's still in the selectman's purview, probably under the same charter, as far as if a name, naming of road creates a problem like this.
And that's in there, too, Doug, as well.
Regardless of whether it's an accepted road or not.
That's in my email as well. That has got to be approved by police, fire, police and fire chiefs, and the board of I believe he's making a presentation to them tomorrow night at the planning board meeting.
Cool. So we'll follow up with that.
Yeah, I'll follow up with Ben on the underlying question on the process.
Also, I just want to say that if we go with this, once we get going with this, I also have Officer Miles I'm working with on this as well. So he works with the computers, he's worked with that system.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it's important to have him involved.
Certainly. I also thought it interesting, this is only 17 years old, this letter, right? No, bear with me. Chief La Bombard, Lieutenant Loughlin, Fire Chief Don Morris, DPW Director Chevalier, Building Inspector Minnie O'Banetti. Mm-hmm. In 17 years. Complete changeover. So you could see how things might fall off their radar.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you. Interesting. Okay, we'll do that.
Okay. Thank you.
All set?
Yep.
Thank you.
This is from Police Chief David Ricardi. I had the pleasure of receiving another $25 donation from Luis Alberti, who wishes to remain nameless, who resides at 100. This is Mrs. Alberti's 12th donation for, it's an inside joke, 12th donation. Thank you, Mrs. Alberti. For 2017, as you're aware, Mrs. Alberti made 10 donations in 2016, so she's beat her own record. She's requested her $25 donation be used for our Citizen Police Academy. We need a motion to accept this generous donation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sir. Also from Police Chief David Ricardi. As you're aware, at the Veterans Day ceremony this past weekend, Matt Eggleton from VFW Post 872 announced that their spaghetti and chicken dinner benefit raised $700 for our K-9 program. I'm delighted to inform you that this afternoon Matt came into the police department and presented us with a check from that benefit. Our Southwick Police K-9 Fund is larger today due to the efforts of the members of the VFW Post 872. On Saturday, October 14th of this year, the members of the VFW held their annual spaghetti and chicken supper to raise funds for the K-9 unit. VFW was able, through its hard work, as I previously mentioned, to raise $700 to put towards our K-9 unit funding. The members of this department and I appreciate the efforts made by the members of the VFW as it helps us in our effort to maintain this valuable resource, not only for our community, but to our neighbors when needed. I'm asking that the Select Board approve the generous donation for our K-9 fund.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And this is from Sergeant Sanders, Community Services Officer. Citizens Police Academy will be finishing up soon, and the 25 students in the class will have completed the eight-week course, and they're having their graduation on Tuesday, December 5th at 7:00 at Town Hall, inviting the Board of Selectmen to attend the event. I'm also hoping that one board member would give a speech that evening if possible. Please let me know who will be attending so I can complete the program for that evening.
I'll be in.
I'll be there.
I will be there as well. We'll toss a coin later.
Oh, you're speaking.
I'll make that a formal motion.
I'll second that. Aye.
Aye.
Chief, did you get that license plate?
Yeah.
It's right on my back.
Like six minutes is...
It's a dry one.
Holy crap. Oh, man.
You didn't buy a shiny bottom for it.
Yeah.
It'll do fine.
For two weeks.
Till the spot closes.
Are we due for an appointment here? I lost my agenda.
Yeah.
There is no appointment.
No.
Keep plowing through this as we go on. Liquor license status update. Cove is in the process of going to auction.
Yep, met with him last week.
Okay. And that license will be renewed. Krabby Joe's waiting for paperwork for change of manager, change of officers and directors. Last paperwork submitted is changed. License is being renewed. Southwick Country Club waiting for process, I'm being sold. License is being renewed. American Legion, change of officers and directors and change of manager. License is being renewed. The Ranch, waiting on change of manager approval. License is being renewed. When you say waiting on change of manager approval, is that from the state, or is that, has to come in front of us?
Actually, I talked to them last week, and they need one more piece of paper than I need to fax to them.
To the state?
All the ABCC.
Okay. Hilltop, waiting on paperwork for change of manager, officers and directors, and corporate name. So they've got the track back then.
I also met with the Giorgio's owner today, and that's, there's three people looking at that, too, so that's been...
Is Hilltop even open?
No. It's in process, though.
Okay.
His, they have, they're dealing with the IRS right now. The brother's opening it.
Yeah, they're fine.
They're fine, yeah.
He called today, hasn't been back.
Yeah. 8A, approval of all liquor entertainment licenses for calendar year 2018, pending receipt of the aforementioned requirements and all the other requirements.
Yep.
So you're looking for an omnibus motion and approval?
Yep, pending everything, you know, receipt. There's no more signing them.
Right.
You don't have to sign them anymore.
We stamp them.
Fantastic. So we have a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and this is from the governor and the lieutenant governor. Congratulations. I'm pleased to notify you the town of Southwick has been awarded a Sustainable Materials Recovery Program grant. I want to thank you for your commitment to reducing waste and increasing recycling for the benefit of our communities and the environment. In close, you will find instructions from the Department of Environmental Protection on next steps. So it's for the dollars, it's $5,500 for a roll-off container and up to $1,000 for education materials to publicize the new drop-off collection program. So, need a motion to accept for the chair to...
Yep.
Yep, chair to sign.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And this is from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. U.S. Census Bureau mailed out an informational booklet to the chief executive, highest elected official in each community, asking for assistance providing updated addresses for their communities. So we have to appoint someone.
Right, the board usually designates the town clerk.
Exactly.
As the, for the local update of census addresses liaison, called the Luca Liaison.
I'll make the motion for the town clerk to handle this.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Her name is now Luca, like an old Suzanne Vegas song. Carl, can you tell us what is 11A in English, please?
Sure. It's one of the legal required documents for the net metering credit sales agreements you have for the three locations for Hancock, Massachusetts, where the solar panels are being installed for our next three net metering agreements. And even though you signed off on this, Doug, a number of months ago, all the parties and their creditors are requiring it to be updated, so the town attorney is recommending that the board designate its chairman to sign off on this.
Make a motion for the chairman to sign off on the net metering...
Credit estoppel agreements.
Estoppel agreements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Six months, we'll make a motion for you to sign it again. And again.
Six months, it'll be you. But who's counting? Library. On behalf of myself and the board trustees of Southwick Library, I'm asking to hire Jaclyn Hart for the 37 and a half hour position of Assistant Library Director at the rate of 25.377.7 per hour. Wow, that's very accurate. Jaclyn surpasses the educational requirement. She has earned a Master of Library Science degree and meets the job requirements, having worked in the library for two to four years. And this is from Diane Caruso, the director of the Southwick Public Library. I'm also asking for permission to advertise Jaclyn's current position as young adult librarian. This is a 37 and a half hour per week union position and pays $18.73 per hour. 12A and 13A, so it's two votes. One is to extend an offer to Jaclyn Hart, and one would be to post her position.
Yep, those are the listed action items on the agenda.
So we want to hear from Diane since she's here.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I didn't even pay attention. Please.
Irene Edgerton is retiring. That's why we have an opening. So Irene was in on the interviewing, and she and I both felt very comfortable with Jaclyn taking over her position. Jaclyn is someone who owns her job. You don't have to sit there and tell her what to do. She knows what's, what needs to be done, and she does it.
Thank you. Thoughts, comments, concerns?
They've always made good recommendations, so I have no problem with making a motion.
Sure.
There's a motion to hire Jaclyn Hart.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then a motion to post.
Motion to post.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I know I'm driving you nuts. That's why I'm doing it on purpose, because I seen you fidgeting over there. Item 14, please join us for the Candy Cane Extravaganza Christmas Luncheon at the Southwick Senior Center, catered by Tucker's, Wednesday, December 13th, from 11:00 to 1:00. Choice of lunch, Yankee Pot Roast or Scrod? That's right, I had lasagna. Please call. Typically, department heads have served the seniors and then enjoyed a meal. This year, we're asking people to pay half of what we charge the seniors, so it would be $7.50 per person.
Yeah, so the Council on Aging Director is looking for a donation, if the board would so approve, from its own gift account.
Did they have a recommended suggested donation?
Sure, several hundred would be something that would appreciate.
400 from the gentleman on my left.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And make sure you put on it you want lasagna, so you're getting it.
Fire chief still here? Hi there.
Yeah.
I have a letter from you. Be advised, the Firefighters Association has voted to purchase a used mobile light tower slash generator. We had one in Granby, and it was a great asset for improving safety and lighting scenes during training or actual fire calls. Save it. It was also used by the PD for major accident investigations. Our plan is to use it down back at the training grounds and at extended fire scenes. It also serves as a generator, allowing less wear and tear on apparatus. I look to the board to accept this great asset. This donation is valued at $3,600.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much to the fire association and everything. It's not out front, right? Check it.
Maybe more.
You got all the bulbs you need on?
Maybe it could be LEDs.
Well, we're at it. Another letter from the chief. I am requesting the following applicants to be approved as EMTs for the Southwick Fire Department. There have been many full-time appointments made in surrounding towns, and I am proud to say that a few of our EMTs have chosen, been chosen for those positions. However, as a result, we'll be losing a percentage of our on-call EMTs, which requires immediate replacement to fill the void in their, their absence creates. At this time, we have our last new hires in orientation, but none of them completed the orientation process yet. The following list are the individuals that I am requesting be appointed to the Southwick Fire Department as EMTs. I apologize in advance, this is me speaking, for if I butcher any names. Joseph Martinez, Liam Jackson, Michael Perot, Clark Robinson, and Kelsey Murray. If you require further documentation or have any questions, please contact me below. So I need a motion to appoint these five as EMTs.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this is the last bit of paperwork. We need a motion, this is a Pioneer Valley Planning Commission...
Monthly requisition for the community development block grant administration.
So this one is for $12,350.44. This is the Veterans Street Infrastructure Project and...
Housing rehab.
Housing rehab and the mobile food pantry project. And this is for labor indirect and other direct costs.
So you need a motion for you to sign?
No, for all of us to sign.
All right. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to old business. The first matter in old business is this sixty-one B application for seven thirty-nine College Highway Southwick Country Club right of first refusal. Is there anyone here that wanted to speak to that matter? That didn't get an opportunity at public comments before the board deliberates and votes on this application? Going once, going twice? Okay. Well, we had a ton of, a good amount of comment at our last meeting. And we got a lot of, there was a good amount of discourse, that we got feedback from Planning Board, Conservation Commission, CPC, members of the public. And therefore, here we are, and we did continue to see if we got any additional input either written or tonight, and I personally didn't receive any, you?
Yeah, a few. They're just basically telling me to be an idiot if we open up a golf course, but we owe you that, but that's okay, I listen to them.
Basically the same, that most people understood after listening to the, what the news media put out, that we understood the situation.
Excellent. So therefore, I guess we're looking for a motion, absent a compelling argument on, in any other direction, that this was not a land that was on any list of, that was requested of all the boards in town that were looking to preserve land in our town, as a, even on a dream list, this was not on it. So I guess I would be looking for a motion to release our right of first refusal under Chapter sixty-one B for the property that's described here, commonly known as the Southwick Country Club.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item of business, Chief of Police Selection Process. Those packets were due in by, over a week ago, correct?
Yes, the seventeenth.
Believe we had four applications, sir?
Correct.
So, we need to, A, announce who those candidates are, and B, schedule a time to interview, correct, sir?
Yep, let's step to the board on how it wants to handle that part of the process.
So, based on the information I have, in alphabetical order, they are Sergeant Rhett Banish, Lieutenant Kevin Bishop, Detective Sergeant Robert Landis, and Sergeant Kirk Sanders. So, we can, we are not meeting next week, correct?
Correct.
So we can schedule something for the eleventh as a board?
Sounds good.
About a half hour apiece?
Do you think in half an hour, twenty minutes, thirty minutes?
I think half hour should be fine.
It depends, it actually depends upon how many questions you're going to...
Well, we should keep it under a hundred.
Yeah, and sure, essays to two hundred words?
Two thousand.
Two thousand?
Yeah, or twelve pages.
Twelve pages.
Single spaced? Single spaced?
Some of them guys are gonna double space it, I just know what, and they use the big fonts. But we should have, I think a half hour should do it.
Part of that process is...
I think a half hour.
I mean, half hours, two hours, this is a, you know...
How many questions apiece?
I think we should get...
Three?
Three apiece, three apiece.
Six, that gives us half hour.
Three, six, nine.
That's nine questions.
I was on the short plus.
Nine, and then there's always, there's always...
By all means, give more than three when you submit your draft questions, in case there's any redundancies.
Absolutely.
Or legally disallowed ones, like last time, yeah.
Yeah, no, actually, that hasn't been an issue in years, so that's...
So yes, I think...
Then that way, because you want to give each one of them an opportunity to do a statement...
They usually do.
...and the other parts of the process.
So we should probably kick off a little early on the eleventh?
Six o'clock, five-thirty, five...
Either one, five-thirty or six.
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty. Five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
Gotta wear a suit?
Yes.
Yeah.
What else, do we have on the eleventh?
We have the Planning Board Joint Appointment.
Okay.
We'll carry that, like, at seven, they usually meet at seven anyway.
Yeah.
So they'd be at seven-thirty.
Huh? In two hours, five-thirty, seven-thirty, so seven-thirty is should we carry the Planning Board?
Okay.
Which means we'll probably get to them around eight-fifteen. Which they're used to, because I used to be on that board. They'll probably start showing up at eight o'clock.
Their old chairman's gonna do it to them now.
So, have your questions to Carl and Cindy by...
Week's end.
Sure.
By when?
The end of this week, so the first. Bridge?
Yes.
Two calls made today, no response, no answer or response to the engineer, hired engineer. Nor anything of the previous. The last issue, which I think I reported on, was that he was out, found something, needed to go back and was referring, and that was the last one.
That was mildly concerning.
Yeah.
So was the absence of communication.
Carl, what's Plan B?
Well, I suppose the town attorney had been talking to another firm about having someone else perform it on behalf of the five-partner, the selectmen, as road commissioners, and then to recover with leans against the properties. I mean, your big concern is the sending of heavy apparatus and, you know, driven by and operated by employees and volunteers of the town, going to those locations and making emergency responses.
Right, and we've been drawing this out, and it was supposed to be, I think it was the twenty-seventeenth of November was the last due date?
Yeah, and I had had drugs...
Which was already late?
...before that.
Right, which was already going on.
Yeah, and I believe the engineer's name's Petrus?
Petrus, Michael Petrus, in Buffalo.
Not to be confused with a DPW employee.
No relation. So do we need an estimate from Petrus, or do we have seen?
I have gotten estimates from a different engineer that the building inspector had forwarded, that had worked on other bridge projects in town, and I think his estimate was about four thousand.
Four thousand.
To give a report on, you know, it's capable of what it's, you know, across, if it's legit.
That's fine, then the board, the board should authorize the chief to work with that person, and I can work with the chief on that, identifying that person, because that's a straightforward procurement contract, it's under the allowable threshold, so I can do that fairly quick.
I might want a suggestion to be to touch basic council one more time, unless there's some conversations going on that we weren't privy to, I don't think so.
Right. Yeah, we can do that.
Usually Ben's pretty good about it.
When are you back on duty?
I'm in and out, but I'll work on it during the week.
On the tree, we have to reach out to that engineer one last time to let him know that that's where we're headed.
Yeah, I would let Ben do that.
Yeah, exactly.
But I mean, we're not meeting again for two more weeks, which puts us into the new year already before we start, you know what I mean? So I think we, if we, I'd entertain a motion to do exactly that, give, so that'll give them at least two weeks to be working on this, the process of notifying DeGray and the other resident, if necessary, and the other engineer that says, you know, I don't know if you got paid or whatever, but we don't have anything from you, we're going on a different route here.
Exactly, one wonders why the work product hasn't been finished, it's fairly, it looks like it's a straightforward analysis.
Unless he's out hunting next to him, we just don't know.
So...
I haven't seen him.
See anything?
Been making ice cream, I don't know.
I'd see him.
Motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Chief Ricardi, you heard back anything on our watercraft folks?
Well, we haven't any complaints lately on the lake, but I've not heard any...
I have. Yeah, mostly about just me, me in general.
It's been working out pretty good.
Yeah, that's great.
No response as of this one.
Fantastic.
Everything else has been submitted, and we're just playing the waiting game.
Other old business?
All I have is the memorial work we've been doing with the high school for the, the three plaques we're putting together. Looking to take three thousand out of the account that we have five thousand in, to work on that project.
The monument.
The monument.
Yeah.
And they're going to fundraise the difference. I said we'll leave a cushion of two thousand in there because we need to...
How close does three thousand get you?
I guess the plaques order, which is really the, the good part about it all, there's still two thousand short, but they can fundraise it, and if they bring in more, then they'll go back into that account.
Yeah, I think they have enough to, to generate the check, because our check would just go ditch in the mail.
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
So just updating you, making sure it's okay.
Do we have to vote or anything on that, or?
I don't think so, it's in the account, earmarked for the memorials and service to the memorial.
To recognize those...
Great work.
Individuals that were killed in action.
Troy Yankee, once again. He's a heck of a kid. That's all I have on our old business.
Sir? I have one update for you.
Use?
Use. You've got a letter from this week, from the town, uh, town attorney, and, um, from Ben Coyle regarding the marijuana opt-out. I did go back to town council last, or the week before last. Given that the town had voted in favor of the two ballot questions on this subject, and given all the ambiguities that have happened in the gyrations with this law, I wanted, straight from the attorney, as to what are the town's options regarding any other initiatives regarding recreational or medical marijuana in the town of Southwick? And I, I think I've mentioned that, and I, I know I've mentioned it in front of the committee, the, the zoning subcommittee, that the two ballot questions in town did pass, medical marijuana and recreational marijuana questions both passed, which you can infer from them passing that the town was generally in favor of having medicinal marijuana and recreational marijuana in the town of Southwick, but what you can't infer from the ballot question is, did the town, townspeople want to have either of those facilities in our town? So, okay, I want it, but I want to go to Westfield or West Springfield or Springfield to get it. So, and that question just wasn't answered by the ballot question. So, according to what the attorney says, that there is an available ballot question that can be put forth, basically, the ship has sailed, I believe, on medicinal, but there is a potential ballot question that could be put on a future ballot regarding recreational marijuana. And I think the best, best route at this point is to at least present this information to the zoning subcommittee and see what their thoughts are, and then bring that opinion back to this board, and we can take further action as necessary from there. And we are meeting, I don't even know now, because the sixth, sixth of December, so we can come back for the eleventh, um, with at least some feedback from them on that. Makes sense?
No, I, I think we, we definitely need to look at it. When you go online or you read some of the publications, there seems to be a lot of smaller communities, particularly border communities that border on other states, that are taking action to, uh, not to support recreational marijuana sales in their communities, so. So I think being a border town, I think we definitely have to look at this issue.
There, there also was a, a chart, and I didn't bring it tonight, but I'll make sure that the board gets it, because it came, there was a, a list of cities and towns that voted, how they voted on the two ballot initiatives, and then had a ballot box issue on the other, to opt out of having recreational marijuana establishments in their town, so I'll provide that to you as well. So, we have it for the eleventh. Okay?
Very good.
Thank you. New business, DPW Veteran's Street Project staging.
Which is just what you were talking about earlier.
Which we covered in public comments.
Yeah, I mean, I think the important thing is Randy and the safety officer should get together and talk about it, and then they can follow up with the, the abutment business.
Fair enough.
I mean, Randy, there's nothing contemplated for staging this time of year, right? It wouldn't be till the spring, actually?
More than likely, I mean, they're gonna, they may be doing some kind of tree work, they may want to use some area for, and over the coming couple of months, but I mean, this spring is when they'll do the heavy, heavy on that.
So is there a fence that's going up around all that?
Well, we can, we can ask them, whatever, if it's town property, we can ask them to put over what we want.
Yeah, oh, I just, I see the square, so I just wondered... I don't care what you put up, just wondering, so, so if tomorrow they're cutting trees down, they're not putting up a six-foot-high fence and blocking off that town property slash that bars?
Well, they're not cutting the trees in that area.
I know that, but you know what I'm getting at?
Yeah.
So, so we do this, great, we're gonna use that parcel, it's town property, people have used it for the rail trail, he's used it for his bar, whatever he feels is or isn't his. So we do this tomo, tonight, doesn't matter, they could drop one sewer main in that corner, they're not fencing it off, so like you said, you may not see anything go there till the spring anyways, correct?
More than likely.
Right, it's not like we're gonna go through, mow that down, fence it up, put a gate with a lock and say, ah, here it is, we're not doing that, no.
It's, I mean, we could ask for a fence, I mean...
I'm not, I'm just saying, so overall, if nothing happens, you wouldn't know it's there, unless someone actually drops a piece of equipment there. Right, that's what I was getting at. So it's business as usual until we actually need to use that parcel.
The contractor's asset could use that parcel, so that's why the question's on it, you know, pass one to you.
Yep.
And that's why, you know, I did a courtesy call to him, Carl suggested calling, which I did last week.
Right, but then, like you said, the contractor's really not starting till the spring, other than...
Good neighbor policy, that's what we're gonna do.
I'd like to get a resolve, I don't want, I don't want to wait too long.
Oh, no, absolutely, I get it. Yeah, yeah, and I'm fine with that, I just, it's not like there's a fence going up tomorrow that he would sit there and stare at for six months with nothing in it, and it's overgrown, saying, geez, I lost my, my parking I was borrowing, and the rail trail people lost where they could go down to the trail, and there's an empty fenced lot with no one using it, that's not the case, okay? That's what I was getting at.
What's, what's the timeline on it? What are they estimating for time to do that street?
How many, how many months?
Right.
Uh, I have to go back and check this out, it's a few months, maybe three, four months.
Right.
Starting March or April.
As soon as I can.
As soon as the weather tells us. It's a little dead-end street, so it's not like it's...
Yeah.
It's not a huge problem.
No, I, I think...
It's gonna be probably two months, easy.
Yeah.
I think Doug was right, you know, a meeting between Randy, the safety officer, maybe even the contractor, you know, work out something, and, you know...
Well, I get the sense he doesn't want that at all.
Well...
It's town property.
That's what I need to hear.
Absolutely, it's town property, but we, it'd be cognizant of our neighbor if, like you said, to Joe's point, let's not go there and put up a barbed wire fence and have it empty fenced in the area that no one's using, I don't know what the contractor's plan is, but let's not do that, but if they, you know, if they need to lay up equipment while the project's going on, we need to do that, right? Fair, you know?
And if people know, look, it's two to three months, and the contractor's aware of the issues, and they all want to be good neighbors, I, I think the whole thing is, maybe we're making a mountain out of a mall.
I think so, too.
Like you said, it's a lot better than just putting a fence up and losing the ability to use the land a lot of other days.
Right.
Or as someone said...
That's more detrimental to you.
Right. No good deed goes unpunished, right? You reached out to tell them what we're doing, and I think, you know, maybe it creates more of a hornet's nest than, you know, if it is what it is.
Yeah, but it cuts down the surprises.
I get it, but I mean, you know, you let them know now that this is gonna happen next year, there may be one dozer there at night while they're at the top of the street, and that's the end of it.
If anything, they'll probably affect the liquor store more, because a lot of those guys park across the street and run over, and that's more where that would be than it is the bar.
These are right.
No, but he's right, just saying, that's really...
All, all of those parcels over there are... Well, all of those parcels over there, you know, it's pre-existing, non-conforming to zoning, they're tiny, the parking's tough, we get it.
Well, wait until the land actually gets developed into its real use, which will be, you know, pathway down into the parking area for the rail trail.
Someday.
Someday.
Well, maybe another thing we could, I'm just throwing it out there, I was thinking outside of the box, maybe we could make the, uh, parking rec aware of what's going on, and it could be some sort of signage, asking people not to use that for parking for the rail trail, but use one of the other parking areas, you know?
Yeah, come springtime. Because if no one does, they're just gonna knock that right over.
No, no, that's what I meant, springtime.
I mean, Joe was already working with the business owner, the real estate broker, and all these other things for the property there, because it is long-term, there'll be, you know, some use for the rail trail.
Right, and that was all brought up at the same time this past week too.
Because Condonmont Road is your next best area, you have very limited parking on Depot Street, you have none on Feeding Hills Road, you have none on Sam West. So we really do need additional areas for accessing the rail trail. Because it's, it's a very successful, um, you know, linear park asset.
Now, if we just had that sidewalk, you know, on Depot Street, all the way down there.
Oh, that sidewalk?
You know, we could...
To get those three parking spots?
We could, we could have people parking, and we're making arrangement with maybe the church to park there, and...
$20 a car?
I was gonna say.
Holy, at the library. Wow, that's a hike. Have you heard back from Billy Malone on that related topic about the easement?
I have, I just walked in, I mean, I, I've been kinda hesitant to, illegal owes some things to us, so I've been hesitant to... But we got, we gotta move forward with that, 'cause there is a legal issue that's gotta be resolved.
With Malone?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a, uh, easement, we need to...
Right. But he was willing to give that easement, correct?
I can, I can, yeah, I just have a...
Alright.
I just dropped the ball on it.
I should have been carrying it.
You've got a lot of irons in the fire.
Yeah, you've got a ton of them.
No, he is right, he's, he's got a half a dozen things.
He's got a lot on his plate.
I hate to give him more when, if those are, I think, are more critical, but that's what...
Yeah, I guess we're on the back burner.
Then we go to a different, use a different member of him.
Okay. MOU with Westfield for electrical inspection services.
Yep, that's something that the, uh, the building inspector and I had a discussion on, and he's talking to Brian Sullivan about making regular use of their electrical inspector under a, um, memorandum of understanding, because right now, our, our current one has limited ability to be able to, uh, serve the public, as well as other support staff, so we're gonna have to restructure some things. So something should be coming forward the next couple weeks.
Great. Uh, any other new business?
Doug, I think the only, we're waiting for something from Mass IT, you saw, I was having some emails with, uh...
Yeah, yeah.
With Mike Hamel.
I have to catch up my email, my email kind of exploded over the weekend.
He was, uh, sending me emails at midnight on Thanksgiving, and...
Well, his family is probably in town.
Yeah.
And, um...
So I am waiting for the final report there.
Great. Any other new business, sir?
I can't even think of anything.
Sir?
No.
Do we have executive session?
Yes, we do.
We do.
We have the police chief, Sandra, would you?
I gotta read some kind of...
Chief, coming back?
Yeah.
I gotta find one, I gotta read.
Can I have the...
I think I gotta read something, but I don't know, oh.
So enjoy the ski season.
Yeah, I think I will. I didn't have to put in 100 hours up there to give it ready, so, so far so good.
Because they haven't been advertising food on their TV ads.
No, they haven't, they're advertising.
They are advertising, too. My wife and I kept saying, what about ice cream and hamburgers?
Yeah, it's okay, it's a gimmick, it's a gimme.
Okay, executive session, Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20B, Section 21, 2, 3, and 7, Chapter 214, Section 1B, and CMR 2903 1B. IAAF negotiations, non-union personnel matters litigation. Move to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and to not reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel, and not reconvene an open session. Yeah, it's I A B P O. Yeah, no, it's, it's here.
Bingo was his name.
You're right. Move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and the chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body, and not reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. Chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body, and not reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property in an open meeting, and the chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the body, and not reconvene an open session. And lastly, move to go into executive session to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special order federal grant aid requirements, and not reconvene an open session. Uh, Doug Mogul, aye. Will you give the aye?
That's fine.